Call to order the regular common council meeting Monday, October 1st, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Isa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellness?
Yes.
Verdict?
Here. Next item is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law, nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, September 28th. Agendas were posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Council acceptance of agenda.
Most to accept.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say that I was saying aye.
Aye.
Polls, carried. Personal appearances, I know we have a few out there and a couple of them said they will wait until Dr. Pauli's done with the presentation for the school district, so if he wants to take the floor now, we'll let him, let him do so.
Wow, that's nice.
They wanted to learn something.
Miss Kathy, Klein Kathy is a board member?
Um, five.
Five.
Wow, time flies, huh Kathy?
Oh, when you're having fun. It does. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and we promise not to take up more than forty-five minutes. Kathy and I both were excited because we said, since it's not our meeting, we actually get to leave when we're done. Typically, we're telling people that, come and present, that's what they can do. I'm going to try to place this in the best spot for you, and really, our, our goal and objective tonight is just to get on the radar of everybody that the Edgerton School District has a referendum coming up in November and get some information. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because you've got some information in front of you, where Kathy and I are certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, but we've got a pretty robust website that has a comprehensive Q and A, so if you have a question, go on there, probably on there with a pretty detailed answer. You're always welcome to contact me. We have an information night coming up Wednesday night at Community, another one on the 23rd at the high school, so you can get information there, and then if you just want a tour, I'm happy to give you a tour of our school, along with about the show off the good things that are going on. So why are we even in the position right now, Andy, can you see that? I can see it, I think you're sitting in the corner. So why are we even at this place and Kathy's seeing this moving air? So just a real quick overview of the age of our schools. Time goes by pretty quick. Nineteen fifty-four was when the original community was built, and then in fifty-seven, an identical wing was put on. So the old part of Community, which is most of that, that footprint, was built in fifty-four and fifty-seven. Inside, very little upgrade could be in place. In nineteen sixty, then, we built Yehara out on the west side of the, the school district, far west side. And sixty-three is when the high school was built, the majority of the high school, there was some additions put on at later times. Nineteen seventy, this is when a small addition was put on at Yehara, I think it was the office space over the gym.
No, that would be the, that would be the pod in nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
So in nineteen sixty would have been the classroom.
The original, yeah.
The original building.
Perfect. And then we did a, a high school addition in seventy-three, just to give you sense, in seventy-nine, that's when we did Community Addition at?
Seventy-nine is the middle school.
That isn't right.
Yeah, seventy-nine is, is the middle school.
This is why Kathy's here. Kathy was here.
I've been around a while.
I'm going to just bring Kathy everywhere. Kathy, come here. Nineteen ninety, let me see if I can ring this one. Nineteen ninety, we did an addition at Community, so that's to the right side, that's the newest part of the building, and I think, is that it? Yeah, well, I wasn't looking up, that's why. And then we did an addition at the high school, I think that's when the office was added.
Yeah, the, uh, the nineteen ninety-nine was the field house and the E-PAC, and then at, also at that time, there was renovations at the middle school to the office, and also out at Yehara, the office and bathroom renovations at Yehara.
Thank you. So the, the big takeaway here is, these three buildings were built more than fifty years ago. And, and it was common at the time, because at the time, we had the baby boom, in the fifties and sixties, and when you have baby boom, five years later, you need to build schools. And so there's a lot of the school districts throughout the country in the same position, where we have aging buildings that have had a lot of deferred maintenance, and it's time to do some upgrades. So in two thousand, this is a timeline, I think it's right on your handout too, and everyone should have received one, and if it's not on the handout, it's definitely on a letter. We, back in two thousand sixteen, in December, the school board authorized a comprehensive facility study, and so we did about nine months on that study, and then last September, the summary results were presented to the school board. So it was a comprehensive study, not just the facilities, but athletic facilities, it was literally everything that the school district owns, and we have everything documented on spreadsheets, so it was, it was very detailed. And then in, uh, September as well, then, once the board said, yeah, we have a lot of needs here, we need to do something about it, then they authorized the administration to invite people to serve on a facility advisory committee, and we had thirty-five members, so we had community members, we had people with kids in school, we had people who don't have kids in school, people from the Yehara resident boundaries, people in town, so it was a, we felt like it was a very reflective group of the Edgerton School District. So that group started meeting in September, and the first four meetings were really, let's just learn about the needs at each of our schools. So our first four meetings, we went to each of the buildings and learned about the specific needs at each of those buildings. The facilitator in October was Bray Architect, because what Bray Architect does is, they don't do facility comprehensive studies to the level that we wanted, in the sense that we really wanted to know everything that's we want on a building. So we brought Cullen on early on, because that's what Cullen does, the, you know, the general contractors, that's their strength. But once we identified the needs, we needed an architect to help us with solutions, because that's not Cullen's strength. Cullen can do pricing, but they don't do the, the solution piece. So we brought Bray on, and then from there, Bray and Cullen kind of were the facilitators of the facility advisory committee. So the first four meetings was just simply go into the buildings, learning about the needs. Once the group established the needs, then Jay, or then the Bray Architects wanted to get a sense of what's the value in the community? What does the community want for the long-term investment in their schools? And it was pretty clear that the facility advisory committee really liked the idea of having everything on one campus, other than we have Yehara out here, but they liked the idea, if we need additional space, can we do it on the current campus without having to build a school offsite? The challenge with that was the traffic up there. So Bray, well, we, our plan for traffic, we do have room for additional space there, we think we can do it. So once we did that, then all the solutions that Bray was working with the facility advisory committee tied to having it all done on one campus. We did that, finally, the facility advisory committee narrowed it down, top priority was Community Elementary School. The original fifty-four, fifty-seven has the original wiring that was put in sixty-some years ago. And, you know, sixty-some years ago, you didn't have all the technology, you just didn't have the electrical demands that we have today. So that is extremely dated, and a lot of it, when we did tours of the school, some of the people who don't have kids and that they're far removed from the schools, it was common to hear, the classroom looks the same as when I went to school there. Well, it is the same, just even older now than when you went. So Community was identified as priority number one, and then we came up with a bunch of other projects, at the high school, from the science labs to the cafeteria space, and several projects. So once the facility advisory committee said, here's our solutions, then we went out to the community and put a survey out to all residents. Eleven hundred residents responded, and we asked on the first question, which option do you like to solve Community? Do you like adding on space for a second school, but on the same campus? One was a thirty million dollar solution, the other was thirty-six million. The residents weighed in, and they said they liked the thirty million dollar solution. And then they were asked to prioritize all the other projects that were listed, so the science lab, the cafeteria space, even tennis courts, athletic facility, everything. So the facility advisory committee got all that data back in June, and they literally used the data from that survey to define the scope of the referendum. So the first thing was, what's the dollar amount? What did the community say they were willing to spend? And it was up to about, we felt comfortable with forty-two million. We have seventy million dollars in identified needs, but the community was telling us to go and take care of all of it. They said, we think we can support up to forty-two million. That was our scope. Then we had to go through and say, well, the priority one was Community Elementary School, the residents weighed in, and they like option one, so that was thirty million, giving us about eleven million left. Then we just went and said, what are the other priorities of the, of, that the community's telling us? So on your handout, it actually tells you the five things that we're going to be addressing in this facility referendum. It's not everything that we've identified, it's about sixty percent of the identified needs, so we're calling it Phase One. So Phase One, I talked about Community Elementary School being the top priority, that solution is basically everything here that's in pink, I think that's pink, depends on how far you're sitting back, it might be gray back there, but everything here in, in pink, that's all completely renovated space. So when this project is done, this will look like a brand-new school inside. The integrity of the shell of the school is good, it's got new windows, we put a new roof on four years ago, so that really is helping in cost savings, that we can actually use the same shell of the building, but just everything inside needs to, to come out. Where you see yellow, that's additional space, because this plan is designed to, we looked at the ten-year projected enrollment, we hired applied labs out of UW, dated a ten-year projected enrollment, so this isn't just to meet the needs today, it's to look at, what is the ten-year growth, and let's make sure we're doing this, we do it right the first time, so this can handle the capacity of what our projected growth is ten years out. So that was the big project. Then the second big one was at the high school, the science labs, these are all the original science labs. When the kids do a lab, there's twenty-four to thirty kids in a room, half of them have to sit out, because we don't have space for all the kids in the classroom to do labs. We don't have the gas required that we really should do the labs, and they're just, they're the, the original rooms from, they're built in sixty-three. So this whole wing, it's a complete renovation, so all the classrooms in there, everything gets updated, the electrical, all that. Then the second, the next priority that the community told us is, we need to do something with the cafeteria and the kitchen area and the commons area, we have students that eat on floors. We have kids that, last year, I took a picture of girls who, they have these folding chairs, they keep them in their locker, and at lunchtime, they literally tailgate right at the bottom of the stairs, because there's no room in the cafeteria. So the community said, that's a high priority too. So to do that, we literally have to use all the space of the current office. Therefore, we have to add some additional space, because we had to pick space to make that commons area bigger. So the high school, what you see here in yellow is the additional space required from the domino effect. If we're using current space to create a bigger commons, we need to add, that, we gotta add that space somewhere else. So it kind of cascades down. So these are the biggest two projects, these take up almost the entire forty point six million to do these two projects. Are those court guards in the middle there? Yeah, they're court guards, and the reason they do a court guard of this addition is because of the, the desire for natural lighting, and there's good research behind the benefits of having natural lighting in the classrooms. So this would be the current kindergarten, and then everything, so really, everything around here is going to have windows, and this is to be cost-effective, it's two-story. So, so here, it's, it's really similar to getting two brand-new elementary schools for thirty million, and I was just talking to somebody today, and their one elementary school is costing them twenty-five million, and we're paying thirty million, and in essence, getting two brand-new elementary schools. This would be divided into a K-two school and a three-five school, separate principles, so it's going to function as two schools, even though it's all on one footprint, okay? And then, middle school and Yehara get the least amount of work, and simply, when you have seventy million, but you only have forty to spend, you have to prioritize. So there's projects identified for both of these spaces, they just didn't meet the cut list. So we call that Phase Two. So projects that were not taken care of here get put on Phase Two, and we'll prioritize Phase Two as well. All right? Any other questions about that?
You know, you know where the old bandrooms are now? Is that where the office is going to be?
Yeah, so they, good question, Matt. Because they're having to use some of the bandrooms to create the new office, then they have to shift some of that band space.
Okay.
So that's what is going on on this side. So it's just this domino effect, if you do this, now it dom, it affects something, and then you gotta put some, that space somewhere else, and then, hey Dale, it affects that, and then it needs, that's so. Good news is, why are we doing it now? Well, interest rates are still near historical lows, the cost of building isn't going down, it's only going up, and right now, this circle represents the district's allowable debt, which is about a hundred million. This red piece of pie represents the current debt of the district, which is about seven million. And this is really good to have, especially if you're a homeowner, it's nice to have little debt, but when you're running a school district, sometimes what this equates to is a lot of deferred maintenance. If they have this low of debt, it means there's, there's projects out there that haven't been addressed, and that's why this is a good time to go to referendum. Passing the forty point six million in facility upgrades will put us at about forty-five percent of this pie. So we still have a significant amount that the district could borrow up to, but we're not going to do. So we'll, after this project is approved by the residents, we'll be at about forty-five percent. So the district is financially in a real good position, and that was not by accident, there was a lot of planning the past eight years to position us. So that's question one. So question one is asking the residents of the school district, are you willing to approve forty point six million dollars so the district can issue debt to take care of all the work that's on there? Question two is operations. So since I've been superintendent the past, I happen to be blessed to come in during the year Act Ten, and when Act Ten occurred, revenue for school districts has been almost flat since two thousand and ten. So we used to get a CPI increase every year, actually sometimes higher, since two thousand and ten, we've been almost flat. So we've been trying to maintain and operate the school district today on the dollars we had nine years ago, and all of you are, know, inflation keeps going up, so we've been trying to maintain, and we've been very strategic with, you know, looking at how we'll be spending dollars, is there areas we can be more efficient and cost-effective? But what's happened is a result, in the past eight years, a lot of districts, because we're not getting increased revenue from the state, they're going to operational referendum, they're asking their community, are you willing to support a referendum to allow us to increase our budget higher than what the state's allowing us to do? And so these are just the contiguous districts to our district, and you can see, Edgerton has not went to the community and asked for an operations referendum. These other districts have, and this is what they have each year in addition to their current budget. So we've identified two point four million dollars in operational needs on an annual basis, we're going to go for about sixty percent, and we're asking the community to support one point two five million. So again, even though we've identified, and you can go on the website and see exactly, we lay it all out, we've identified two point four, when I asked them for two point four. We're trying to say sixty percent on the operational side, sixty percent on facilities. And then, really, the, probably, most people's question is, what's it going to cost me? And the projected tax impact is about four cups of coffee a month, eight bucks a month. I did have one person say they get their coffee at Starbucks, so really, it should be a cup and a half on there. I said, I'm cheap, I get mine at McDonald's, mine's a buck, so we'll meet you halfway, and we'll just say they're two bucks a cup. So eight bucks a month, ninety-eight dollars a year on a hundred thousand dollars of home value. Okay? So what are your questions, Andy?
When would you start building that?
The, what we, next good question, the question is, when will we start building? We passed the referendum November sixth, November seventh, we started designing, probably look to build next spring or summer. And because the Community Elementary, that's the most significant design project, that probably wouldn't start at the soonest of fall, about a year from now, but the high school, that, that project could get started by, in the summer.
So when you start building and all the improvements, what does that mean when faculty and kids are in school? I mean, do you have to move any of them anyplace? Do you have, I mean, how's that going to work?
So the question is really, how do we stage all this, especially Community, which you said?
Yeah, that's, that's how I put it. How do you stage it?
Kathy asked me all that.
I did.
Yeah, so I'm just using her words. How do we stage it? We don't know yet, because we haven't sat and met with the architects yet. But these architects are professional, it's not like they're going to only do work in the summertime. You know, that community piece, all that addition space, could be done while kids are in school, and once that's done, you could shift kids into that and then renovate wings. So there, there's a lot of ways, they won't wait till the kids are out, but they also will make sure that they're not interfering with the learning environment. Other questions?
You're saying that the, the, the elementary school, just the original wiring is the same since the fifties?
Kathy knows this one, it's the first grade bar breakfast, they literally staff an adult by the fuse box, because if you plug in a griddle in one room, and the other room plugs in a griddle, it blows the fuse. And so they, they have the time when they're flipping pancakes and making eggs.
Yeah, I remember back in like mid-sixties in elementary school, we had to take classes in the baby boom, the fifties, it was tight back then, and now we're looking at, you know, sixty years later.
You give an idea that the old fifty-four, fifty-seven has about the same amperage, electrical amperages, if we each have a home, and that's an entire school, thirty classrooms. So, but that's a significant project to update all that electrical. It's not just pole hair.
The most common is original in that area, certainly, if you walk into the classrooms, the, the covers in the back of the, the classrooms and the shelving is all original. The floors, it, it, the floors vary, but many of them are the old-ass old tile, so it's, you know, come to school and that, and that building, you feel right at home, so. And I, I do have to say, though, it's pretty amazing, the teachers do a great job, covering, and the smart boards and stuff, it, you know, we get by, however.
There's alarm? We are, we're blessed with a wonderful staff, and it's interesting that they've just learned to accommodate for the deficiency, deficiencies of building. And then we took a, a group of staff members and FAC members to go see new spaces, and I think people were shocked that, oh my goodness, you actually can have this in a school. And the reality is, an investment in our schools, the better the schools, the more property values are worth, and the more desirable the communities are. Because most people, their kids, they select their next home by the quality of the schools. So we feel real good about the project, we feel the time is right, and we can do it for, so we're sixty percent, and we feel this is a nominal, it's, it certainly is an impact, not gonna, it's an impact, but we really try to manage our budget to make the ability to do that much work, and, you know, some of the nominal impact.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, thank you, and good luck, and everyone remember to vote November sixth.
We have a county here, but you can't.
Okay, who wants to go first, then? Did you arm wrestle for it?
I think I'll follow Dr. Pauli's lead here, and I'll pass out some flyers here, and those move things along much quicker. Director of Medicine, Commander, Rock County Sheriff's Office. I've worked there for about the last thirty years. I appreciate the opportunity to come in here and speak to all of you, the opportunity to introduce myself, and I know that your time is valuable here, so I thought by passing these out, we could skip past some of the real basics here. On here talks about my education, I've got a master's degree from Boston University, I've ended the FBI National Academy, talks about my experience, I've been in charge of every bureau at the sheriff's office, including emergency management, had the opportunity to really work some incredible jobs through the years, it's a joy of working at the sheriff's office, you really get some diversity in, in your experiences. Then on the back, it talks about my platform, and rather than to go into great detail, I thought I could leave that with you, and if you're interested, you can take a spin through it. There's also information on there about my webpage, which has more information about my experiences and things, probably more than what you'd ever want to, want to know, but it'll definitely give you some of my qualifications, I'll be sure. But I thought that I could take this time tonight and spend it on something maybe a little more personal about me, about why it is that I'm running. I've been married for, I think my wife and I spent, or had our twenty-fifth this last fall, so it's been quite some time. I've got two boys, nineteen and twenty-one, I just had two nieces that moved in with me, and they're nine and fourteen, so all of a sudden, my life is getting a little bit busier here. I've lived in Rock County my entire life, I think I'm about the fourth generation here, so to say that I'm committed to the community, that's probably pretty accurate. As far as why I'm running for sheriff, when I started this job, I had an undergraduate in sociology, you know, the study of systems, and how you can make them more efficient, and I pretty much approached every assignment that I've had with that same lens, you know, when I got in there, how could I tweak this to make it work just a little bit better? And I think through the years, we've been able to make some pretty good improvements in a lot of different areas, but I think as I get towards the end of my career, there's still a few more contributions that I'd like to make before I leave. I'll give you just one quick example, because it sounds a little sterile when you talk about it academically like, like that, but, you know, at the first of the year, I got reassigned to correctional services. This is not a huge stretch for me, probably, after my career, maybe just a little bit less was spent in jail, so I'm very comfortable in that environment. And I know where they got there, and I just happened to be walking through the booking room, and on my way through, just get it to a stop, and, you know, you get that sense that something is just not right, and I backed up, and I look into this booking cell, and you got two guys, my size, in a great big cell, and they're sitting right side by side, you don't see this, too terribly dark, and the one was just crying, like a little kid. I'm like, well, something is definitely, definitely wrong here. Got a hold of the correctional officer, had him open the cell, went in there, and from the first moment that I started speaking to him, I knew we had a serious problem. One of them's operating at the level of a five-year-old, the other one, turns out, was operating at the level of a six-year-old. And how they ever got found competent to stand trial is a bit of a travesty of justice, I think. Luckily, it didn't happen here in Wisconsin, so we'll put the blame elsewhere, but the difficulty is, we had, it's hard to really even sum up how bad this situation was. I've got a Catholic who's in charge of the jail, and he's absolutely as tough as a male, and he said that's probably the worst case he's ever seen. I've got a nursing supervisor who deals with horrific stuff day in and day out, and she, she walked in there and said, I had to leave, I thought that maybe I was going to cry. I mean, it was that serious, how delayed they were. So I thought, well, we've got to do something about this. I went and got her probation laid on, brought her down, and I said, why don't you have a seat here and talk to these guys, and let me know what you're thinking? She goes in and talks to them, and she comes out, and she says, why, it's just absolutely abysmal. And I said, well, good, we're on the same page, what are we going to do about this? And she says, there's really not too much we can do, this is just the way the system works. And I guess that's what really lit me up, because that is not the way the system is supposed to work. So I went back to my office, I burned up the phone lines, and I called the Adult Protected Services, I called Crisis, I called probation poll, where these guys had come from. Little backstory, they were living in another community with a drug-addicted father in a condemned building, no heat, no water, no electricity in the wintertime. Mom had gone down there, she heard what the circumstances were that they were living in, she went down there to get them, she tried to get their probation transferred up here to Rock County, and she was told, that's not possible, if it does happen, it'll take at least three months. Well, she didn't have great means either, so she had gotten somebody to give her a ride down there, and she couldn't afford to wait, but she couldn't leave her kids living like that, so she brought them back, of course, as soon as they hit the state line, you know what happens, and that's how they end up sitting in my jail. So I did my best to try and get them out, or reassigned somewhere else, and just kept hitting brick walls, but eventually, got through to our DA's office, moved out in front of Judge Hanson, if you haven't met him, he's a salt of your sort, he remanded them to custody of his mom. He remanded them to custody of his mother, go back down there and address their issues in the state that they came from. So, you know, at the end of the day, as I walk out, you can feel pretty good, you know? Like, I accomplished something good today, I made a difference, and about the time you go sit in your car, the next block hits, you know? Who didn't like a walking past today? Who is still sitting down there that probably needs some sort of intervention to make sure the justice is done? So, I guess that's what I'm looking for. Before I, before I'm done with this career, I want the opportunity to be able to make a difference, not just on an incident-by-incident situation, but more on a system-wide approach. And I think the sheriff has that ability. And I'm hoping that I get the opportunity after November 6th to implement some of those changes, to make sure that the system works a little more efficiently, that we all cooperate a little bit better, and better serve the people of our community. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Brink. I represent you in a 43rd seminar. I replaced Andy in his position. For those of you that don't know me, I spent 37 years as a teacher and coach in Milton. I coached 90 high school teams when I was teaching there, taught history and government, so I had a background in this. And I, and I appreciate being here, because I know the time that you put in on the city, on the city council. I served on the Milton City Council, City Council President, the last year I served on it. I currently serve on the school board like Kathy does. I'm Vice President of the School Board currently now, which my term runs to April, and I'm not gonna rerun again, because it's getting to be quite a challenge to be on the school board and to be at the State Assembly. We have facility needs, just like you do. We're having a much more difficult time getting something accomplished in Milton, and so it's taking a lot of time. We meet once a month, once a week on our facilities to try to iron out something that we can get done. So, I can just tell you this, our failed referendum two years ago, if we ran the same one right now, it would cost us $7 million more. So, I think if you get it passed in November, that would be a big savings for you, because you know, interest rates are going up and the cost of building is going up. So, that's all I'm gonna say about that. But that's some of my background in local government, which I think helps me when I go to the State Assembly. Now, I also, we spent 12 years as Recreation Director in Milton, and built all the parks. All the parks that become of Milton were parks that I had handed and building. Also built the Veterans Memorial. I started that, and we helped raise that with all private funds in Milton. So, so those are the things I'm pretty proud of, that I, that I did locally. In, in my job in the Assembly, I was able to have two hometown heroes recognized in my first two terms. I've been in office 21 months now. One of those heroes was from Edgerton here, the dog, Rumer. You might remember when Rumer came on the Assembly floor, the only dog ever to be on the Assembly floor. And practically, every Assembly person wanted their picture with the dog sent back home, with a selfie back home. So, it kinda took a long time to get Rumer out of the Assembly chambers there. I also had a hometown here, the Milton, Town of Milton Police Office, and I donated a kidney to the boy that she didn't know, and so I was quite honored to have her there, and what a hero, to donate a kidney to a boy you don't even know. And, and so, and it happened to be the boy was a, the grandpa was a former student of mine, so I had some connection with that. So, that was quite touching for me to be able to introduce them on the floor of the Assembly. I introduced 11 bills in the Assembly. I got one passed. I got cosponsors for all the other ones. I'm hoping, I'm hoping to get reelected, so I can get those other bills, at least get a hearing. When you're in the minority, sometimes, as Andy tells you, it's difficult to get a hearing on a bill, because they simply, Chairman's, the majority party simply don't bring your bills up. So, hopefully, in next term, I will be able to get that accomplished. I had 12 listening sessions. I held three forums, I had a technology forum in Milton High School, from technology people all over the state. I'm the head of our Technology Committee on the School Board. I went to Washington, D.C. to lobby for technology funds, and I paid for it at my own expense. I spent three days in D.C. visiting our legislators from the state to get those funds, and we got double the money we had before. Plus, I lobbied for Title IV funds when I was there, which, which is funds for teacher training, which we were able to get more money for as well. Since I serve on the Education Committee in the Assembly, it's one of my committees, so I thought it was important that I go lobby for that money, because we all know, we all need more money for education. I also held farm tours in, in, in Rock County. I held tour, I took six Assembly Democrats to Rebound's Farm, to Steve Townsend's Farm, and to Amazing Grace. One of the things in the Ag Committee, as Andy will tell you, we have people on the Ag Committee from the Democrats that live in Milwaukee and don't know what it's like to be on a farm now. I actually took them to Central Wisconsin, to the farm that my father grew up on, because it's, it's the farms that are in jeopardy right now, 120,000 acre farms run by families, which my cousin Philip runs that farm. And so, I wanted them to see the problems at rural, you know, how difficult it is for a farmer to make it in rural America when prices are the way they are. So, so I got them to come to Central Wisconsin, which is something I'm proud of, so they could take that experience back and learn a bit what it was like on a farm. I'll tell you, two of them couldn't stop petting the calves. They'd never petted a calf before, so it was kind of a great experience for them. Currently, I serve on two study committees. The Public School Trust Fund Committee, Representative Kotzma appointed that committee. You have one Assembly person from the majority, one from the minority. The Public Trust Fund Committee actually overlooks four trust funds, and the one that I'm most interested in is the one that provides funds for our school libraries, about approximately $35 million. It's the only budget for libraries that most schools have, at least in Milton. That's the only budget that we have. And our current treasure would like to take all that money and put it invested in the stock market, and so, something that could become very volatile. I'm interested in growing the fund as well, but I think we can find a better solution. And I must say, Representative Kotzma's done a good job bringing people pros and cons to making some changes. Every so many years, you update the statutes, and that's what we are doing now. I have a meeting next week on this, we're meeting once a month. I'm also, was appointed by the Governor to Dairy Task Force, and this month, we have four meetings coming up in October in different parts of the state. I'll be able to make three of those four. So, on that committee, we have 31 people and four legislators. And our job as legislators are just to listen, and then, when we get done, to recommend legislation that we could introduce to maybe help deal with our dairy farmers. So, in most cases, there's 31 people, there's 11 farmers, 11 processors, and 11 bankers, and kind of an interesting group. I learned a lot in our first session that we had in Madison, so that's what I've been doing, so, thank you. And I should also say, Edgerton, I used to be an Albion Tiger from Wally Olston. You know, I could tell you a story. I moved to Milton, and I pitched for the Milton Crescent, so I won 34 straight games in the day and night league. We won the two titles. My 35th game was against Albion. My wife made me wallpaper that day, and I could not throw my slider, and Albion killed me. So, I remember that very vividly. Two years later, Wally asked me to pitch for him, so I got to pitch two years with the Albion Tigers, which is an honor for me.
With the transportation funds, do you have any ideas, solutions to get more money in there, tolls or fees?
We have all kinds of solutions, but we have, my party has all kinds of solutions, but we have no control to implement those solutions. Right now, it seems like everybody's all over it. The Governor's promised, I think, 30 percent more funding for what, for municipalities and for some of the towns. Said he's going to increase that next year. But what I'm hearing is that, in order to get that funding, some of the projects were gonna widen the roads. We're actually, they're talking about narrowing some of the, some of the interstate, this three-lane project around Madison, the two lanes, which is one of the things this Wisconsin State General talked about today. And so, when you talk about transportation funding, I held a transportation forum at Cobers with about 20 people that came, and those 20 people, to the person said, raise the gas tax. And so, they would be willing to want the gas tax raised. We know that our maintenance on our vehicles, if one has doubled with the conditions of our land, so, so hopefully, we can find some permanent solution, because I think that's what people want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Any questions?
Anyone else that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's get moving here, then. Minutes from September 17th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Committee reports, Finance, Mark.
Make a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $138,247.25.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no licenses, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a facade grant for one West Fulton Street in the amount of $5,000.
Second. Any discussion? They did a good job Saturday. They did the roofing one day. It's done, yep. Roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
Lawyer for Finance.
Zoning Board, anything from there? Plan Commission, we had a few things earlier tonight.
Yeah, Plan Commission met tonight, and we have a couple motions here. Motion to approve extraterritorial land division for Gaird, North Newville Road, Section 13, Town of Fulton, to transfer land between adjoining lots number 2018-062.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Motion to approve extraterritorial land division for Anderson, East Knutsford Road, Section 13, Town of Fulton, to combine lots number 2018-058.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Motion to approve extraterritorial land division for Anderson, North Kidder Road, Section 13 and 14, Town of Fulton, to create one lot, number 2018-059.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last is motion to approve extraterritorial land division, Lakewood's Fifth Avenue for D Y N Cannell.
Fifth Edition.
Excuse me, Fifth Edition for D Y N Cannell, LLC, North Mason Drive, southeast of North Hillside Drive, and East Maple Beach Drive, Section 1, Town of Fulton, to create 46 lots, 2018-049.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
That's it.
Public Works.
We met this evening. We discussed a few things with trees. We had a motion to adopt a policy to include street tree planting with all street reconstruction projects.
Is that it? You wanna go the other, the other three items over on there, or two other, two other items?
The other one, item number two that we discussed involving trees was that we had a motion to adopt an ordinance that required the planting of street trees in new subdivisions. And we, there were three options. We decided that we liked alternative number three, which was recommended by staff. And the third item that we discussed was a motion to, we didn't actually make a motion, we discussed the policy of removing dead trees located on private property. And the administrator's going to look into some policies in adjoining cities, and we're gonna discuss this at a later date.
Sounds like all things that we'll be seeing again. Thank you. Okay, the next one is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1518, Final Resolution declaring the City Council's intentions for the 2018 side rock project to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes.
Motion to do so.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1618. Final Resolution declaring the City Council's intentions for the Chaucer Street Reconstruction Project to exercise special assessment, police powers under Sections 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes.
Make a motion to do so.
Yeah, I'll second. Do we have to set the timeframes and stuff?
It was established at the preliminary.
Okay.
Resolution. It's included in your resolution.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to discuss and consider 2019 budget. Go ahead.
You should have received a deck. Is there any possibility we could discuss the Halloween?
Do you wanna do the Halloween hours?
I have to move early for work.
Would that be okay if we moved the Halloween hours up? Anybody object to moving the next item up to set the Halloween trick-or-treat hours? All the person, Olson, has to leave.
Oh, I didn't hear that part.
She wants to know when she can go trick-or-treating.
Got it. Okay, I'm sorry, didn't understand that last part.
Is that okay?
I'm okay.
Are we gonna object? Okay, let's consider setting trick-or-treat hours for Halloween.
I'll make a motion to set them for between 4:00 and 7:00 o'clock. That's how we did it last year.
No, I think it's too early.
We haven't got a second yet. The motion for 4:00? Is that a second?
Can we do some discussion first, or do we have to make a motion?
We can discuss the motion. Hold on, I hear a second over there?
Yes.
Okay. 4:00 and 7:00?
Well.
What day is it?
It's a Wednesday this year. I believe that years ago, when the hours were set from 4:00 to 7:00, that was before daylight savings time was actually moved, and it doesn't, and the clock now does change the weekend after Halloween, so that it makes it late, light out an hour later than it used to be. And a lot of people don't get home from work. They're not home at 4:00 to be ready to have, to hand out candy. A lot of people have to work until 4:00, or 5:00. And I, I think that is even parents getting their kids out and getting ready to be out trick-or-treating at 4:30, it's a little bit early, 4:00, 4:30. And so, I think that it'd be a better time to start at 5:00 and move to, go from 5:00 to 7:00, 7:30, 8:00, but not start until 5:00, I think is a better time.
This conversation sounds familiar from last year. I think it ended up being 4:00 to 8:00 last year.
Sounds familiar from every year.
Right, right.
That does.
Finally, we got somebody up there agreeing, so.
Agreeing on starting later.
That word.
Start it later.
Yeah.
Kids aren't home from school, parents aren't home from supper, so.
People aren't ready yet. You know, the kids are all anxious, and they wanna go out and eat candy. Well, they just got home from school. out and eat candy. Well, they just got home from school. That's kind of hard. As a parent, you want to actually get some good food in them before they're out there eating all that candy. And so, I think all around, so people don't have to rush, give them an extra hour.
Not everybody works a nine-to-five either.
No, but most of the children don't get home from school until 3:30. And a lot of parents aren't home yet then.
Home till after four, so.
Right.
So in the past, I've always agreed with the four to seven or four to eight. And every year, I think, I don't know if that was the right thing to do, that maybe we should start a little bit later. So I have to kind of agree that maybe I'm, I'm thinking more the later start time might be better. I apologize for my phone, but I...
I mean, I'll withdraw my motion. Mark would have to...
We agree to that.
McCann is going to put it up for discussion.
Oh, can you? Why don't we just amend it?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, there you go. Somebody make amendment to it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the trick-or-treat hours to five to seven o'clock.
So can I back up? I think maybe the person that made the motion can do the amending. Is that correct or not?
Anybody?
Oh, sorry.
It's on the table for a vote. You could vote it up and it could fail. That would be one way of addressing it. You can make a motion to amend. That's one way.
Okay, sorry.
If the, if the council, this is not a life or death thing, if the council wishes to allow the individuals to withdraw their motion, it's the will of the body, that would also work.
But she, she could make amendment.
She certainly can. I think she was in the process of doing that.
Yep. And I'll second her amendment.
What was the amendment?
What was the amendment?
I'd like to change the trick-or-treat hours from starting at four o'clock till starting at five o'clock and ending at eight, eight.
And that's still a second?
That's a second.
Okay, so now we got to discuss the amendment.
You can debate the amendment or you can vote on it.
Any discussion on the five to eight hours?
I like it.
Okay, let's, let's vote on the amendment to change the hours to five to eight, which is pretty much voting on the amendment to set the hours, isn't it? All in favor of five to eight amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Now we got to go back to the original motion with amended hours.
That's correct.
Easy.
Any discussion on the original motion with amended hours now? Shouldn't be. Okay, the original motion was four to seven, but now the amendment passed to make it five to eight. All those in favor of the five to eight hours on the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is that right?
We got it.
All right. Okay.
I think the request that we just make it permanent and we don't have to do this every year.
That'd be great.
Tom, aren't you going to miss this? You could say that's one thing.
Can we do that under this line item?
One thing you change before you have to.
Tom? Phil? Which Mayor mentioned, can, can we debate that right now? Can we do that under this line item?
It doesn't say 2019.
It doesn't. It does not.
Good question though. Uh, daylight savings sign could change too.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about it next year. Yeah, I like that.
Sorry, Sonny.
Yeah, it goes.
It was a good idea. We'll see how early Matt wants to get out and get trick-or-treating. Okay, back to the budget. And you wanted, you had to leave now?
Yeah. Conversation. Hopefully in your mailbox, you received a packet with the draft budget, and the front page gives some background information about changes, either capital or operating, that you have to consider this year that are different from last. Also included in your packet is an updated schedule of capital projects being proposed, and that is then followed by the summary of the budget as to the levy limit and what amount has to be removed from the budget in order to meet the levy limit. If we can't finalize this evening, if you are inclined, because we don't have final numbers yet on some things, so certainly you can decide certain things, but I would, I don't, we're not in a position to finalize the budget this evening.
I'm making, assuming I'm reading this right, we're over by almost $177,000.
Correct.
And we have a general surplus of 138. Is that correct?
In the capital projects, yes.
Well, as mentioned last time, I agree with the Tom at DPW about getting him eight inch snow blades. Is that for two of them? Is that eight thousand seven hundred, eight, seventy-six hundred? Is that for two blades, Tom?
In four, one blade?
Yeah.
One.
And you want to put that in front of like the pickup trucks?
Yes.
Till they make that pound with the end motors?
Do we have any, Kirsten, do we have any additional information on that painting? Were we able to, did you get information to break them? Okay, that's fine. You're still working on that then. Thank you. I guess I'm gonna just put my, vote in if you will, or my stance that I believe the stuff at the pool really needs to be taken care of, so I'd hate to see anything taken out from what needs to be done at the pool. And I think the library too is in a need for some of those repairs, even though there might be some wiggle room with the dollar amount on the painting.
The HVAC work in the pump room is something that, from the parts conversation, could slide a year if it had to.
That's right. Is that the whole thing, or is that, was there a certain amount there? Okay.
Yeah.
The pump.
The last item on the second column.
The pump, the $29,660?
Correct.
So if we took that out and added that for next year, it would still be doable? Okay. Do we have to make a motion for that, or do we just suggest?
Be clear if you do, then we'll know where we are. There's support for it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to take that out.
I'll second.
And maybe revisit it next year.
There's a motion to take the $29,666 out of the pool budget for the pump room HVAC. Is that original land, or?
It's not in there right now.
Oh, well, you want to add.
Right, that was where we had to try to get the circulation of the air, so it's not just coming in the fan and going out the door, or actually other way around.
Okay.
It would make piping all the way through, ductwork all the way through the pump house, and then out through the wall, so that it would take out some of the moisture.
Any further discussion? Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I asked Tom earlier, that's a levy, the Tronton Road Drive repair. How long does them, them things last, you think? Would it, would that be eligible to go into the capital project, but they don't last that long?
Ten years is the, kind of the policy for that, but that fund, so I don't know what this repair, is this a ten-year repair?
Or longer.
So it would be good for 10 years, you think?
Yeah.
Usually for capital projects, we like to go 10 years or more, right, is our saying?
I have a question under the police, the speed trailer. So I think, this is kind of deja vu too, isn't it? I mean, did we talk about this last year or the year before? So do we not have one now, or we have one that's not working?
The road now that needs to be replaced if you still want it.
I'm sorry, what?
If you still want the speed trailer and its usage, you would have to replace one again.
So we haven't used one in how long?
This past year, when it failed.
So what are the ramifications of not purchasing one? I mean, I know you set that up. It probably helps keep the traffic, you know, going slower, but...
Do I understand the trailer application to be a spot use rather than a permanent installation like East Fulton?
Yes, trailer. We can put it wherever we need it.
Okay.
And we can, or comics and things like that.
Situational?
Situational.
Depends if you want to, if you want the use of one, we got to replace it. If you don't think it's necessary, then we don't need one.
We had discussions, some of the other committees about needing or using one, and he told me back on those that it was shot, and I kind of liked the idea of putting one out somewhere, having them move it around. But, so yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it, just if you're looking to take it somewhere.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking to take that out only, but that's just my own personal, because as I look through, things like, I think the ballistic vests are very important, the taser holsters, that kind of stuff, I'd rather put my money, I mean, if we have to think about what do we keep in versus take out.
No, understood, but I, I walk around a lot, and I told Tom a couple places we need, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of guys that go a lot, you know, just put one up, might detract them from going 35, 40.
Some, some of them.
It might, it might, but at least...
See the one down the road from you flashing all the time.
Believe me, if they get pulled over, they just went by a sign, tell them they were doing 42 in the twenty.
Well, here's my question. So that sign just tells you how fast you're going.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't signal to the station. We got Joe Blow down here that, you know, and you can cut rate. It's just a...
Oh, it's just one that's out there in plain view for everybody to see how fast they're going.
I have a question. Troy, you guys use them at the county? Are they pretty effective, or?
I know they are certainly desired by people on the community, and usually we'll have multiple requests and, you know, kind of put a list together as to where it comes next. Of course, we don't much, we've got a big area out to cover, so I don't know how much information to provide to you.
So Chris, you said we're down to 147? Hypothetically, if we took 12,000 out, that would knock it down to 135? Or is that the thinking?
The Tronton?
Bumping that a year?
That's how the math works out, yeah. So you have to make that motion if you want that to happen.
Bumping that a year, is that what you're saying?
Just, oh, no. In the capital fund?
$138,000.
$138,000.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we use that general fund surplus for the Tronton Road, and then to give us, knock out $12,000 that we need to cut down to 147. And Tom mentioned that potentially for our policy, we don't like use capital surplus fund unless it's 10 years or more. So that's just an option to think about.
Well, if you're thinking about it and you want to do it, go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to take the Tronton Drive repair out of the levy and put it into the capital surplus. Is there a second? Is there? Is there a second?
I'll second for...
That's all I have for...
Just for discussion purposes.
That's what I was gonna say. All right, just to give you information.
Yeah. So what is this regarding again?
It was...
Throtson Drive when you go in. It's probably that and that area.
There's only one way into Deb Woods Tough Division. This is the main road going in. There are some areas that are failing and they're humping up that need to be fixed.
So Matt, your motion is to take it off of this, but use surplus dollars to pay for it?
It is an option, you know, to, because we got the 138 general surplus, we did it last year for the vets bill, and we used some of that for, it was just an idea. And it'd knock off 12,000 like you're talking about, speed trailer.
I agree. I just don't know how excited I am about taking it out of the surplus.
But that's why I, with the other street projects, like Sweeney and West Meadows Curb Repair, that's 18,000 and stuff, you got that in the general surplus?
No, they're not.
Oh, they, oh, sorry. Four is borrowing.
Those are borrowing.
We need the borrowing fours. The curb on West Meadows is in the Stormwater Utility.
Oh, Stormwater Utility, okay. I just thought if it lasted over 10 years or more, just a thought.
For the curb and the street repair?
On Tronton?
On West Meadow.
Yeah, that's, that's funded through the Stormwater Utility.
Right.
What pieces of those are? The piece under DPW and under Stormwater. So should there be a five in the first box?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
That's okay. The first box under Capital Projects DPW, Tronton Road Curb Repair, should there be a five?
Yeah, it could be. It's highlighted, so it's not in the, you're right, I should add a five there.
Okay.
But it's highlighted, so it's, you know, it's, you take it out, it's not going to affect your levy. That's why those boxes are grayed out.
Yeah, okay, no, I get it. There's a motion on the floor to move the Tronton repair to the Capital Projects Fund.
To the what? To take out the surplus.
Take it out of the capital surplus.
Capital surplus.
Capital surplus, yeah. Any further discussion?
If it did pass, Chris, it knocked, what, we got to cut down to 135?
Anyone else? Rule call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Wellnitz?
No.
Verdict?
Yes.
Issa?
No.
Motion fails. Two, three. You have just an option.
Tom, is that speed trailer, is that something that can be looked at to be possibly revamped
Probably would look at it, probably recommend replacement, but that cost, it could be looked at once and see if you get a final cost. What am I due to, the trailer itself probably be used, but the wiring and electronics in it are, are done.
Are we eligible to borrow the county one?
Good questions.
They don't have cameras on them. We can just go hook onto it.
Oh, you forgot to take that off recording. I like them. I think that they're very, I mean, you're right. I mean, people see that and they force them to slow down. We also have the speed lights coming into town, a couple different places. I like them. I think they're important. I just think, from a safety perspective, I would rather see some, make sure that we take that out versus some of the ballistic vests or some of the other needs for the police department. I think that's more of a, a little bit more of a nicer to have and maybe think about putting it in next year. So I'll make a motion to take out the speed trailer for this year's budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I've already said my piece, yeah? I said I've already said my piece. I'm, I like the idea, I'm, I'm not...
Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Verdict?
No.
McIntyre?
No.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Three, two. Good thing Debbie left. We're looking at some ties here, I think.
Good thing for you.
That's what I mean.
A lot of tiebreakers, isn't it?
Takes us down to about 147 or 141, some...
145, 21.
140, 521.
Yes. If the owl's accurate here.
What's in the generator project and where's that at?
We have designated funds of like thirty, I'm going on memory, thirty-two, five, maybe? And, um, it's, my, my thought is it's tied up with this energy study we're doing, to see if there's a way to reduce those costs, and have, um, some kind of generation that might actually serve the purpose of a generator. So it's.
Just asking if the project is done, there's some money that can, that would free up some money, that project is over.
It's designated, I, I guess it's up to the council, at this point, I haven't thought about taking it off the table, because that study's too far from, you know, it's a long way from being complete. So it's up to the council, that is designated in, from your last year's budget. In my recollection, thirty-two, Cindy, do you have a memory of?
I thought it was more than that, but I could be mistaken, too. I haven't looked at it for a while.
I assume you saw the note that the library looks to have a significant surplus from this year, and the library has some pretty significant expenses, so you could apply those surplus funds to some of the library projects. I mean, it's not a guarantee the surplus will be there, so, but the estimations are that it will, that those funds will be available. We're working on HVAC contract, and trying to bring to you some, to move that project along, because those, that system really needs, needs work. So if it were spent this year, then you wouldn't have to spend it next year, but you'd have funds available for it, because there's a surplus created in the library budget.
So if we took that thirty-five thousand dollar surplus? Then we take that off of the one hundred and forty, you're saying?
Yes.
Yep.
Then that still leaves them to decide what they wanna do with the library board, as far as, with the remaining money.
Um, you mean regarding the rest of their budget?
Yes.
Yeah, this is just a capital item.
Yeah.
So you haven't addressed the library budget at all, and determined what levy the library will have, that'll be part of the process.
Right, it's still up to them to address their, their expenditures going forward.
Correct.
Since they would have less, that money, less to.
Or we can take that thirty-five thousand and take it off of our levy, or however over the, on the levy, is what we're saying. We wanna apply that towards it, either way.
Yeah, you can designate it for next year, and, and apply it to the, the air conditioning worker. And, and I'm, I'm concerned that number, the forty thousand that we have, is, we're a long way from getting that project bid. So, I mean, that's our best number that we have, but I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that that number is a long way from reality at this point, so I don't know if it's, hopefully it's adequate. We've had some estimates from people who, who know the system, but, um, you know, it's, we'll be, we'll be doing our best to try to get that project done for that money. But the, there is that surplus that is available that could be applied to next year to reduce the levy needed for the library work next year.
Okay.
The thirty-five is an estimate, would it, we'd be better off to go with, using thirty thousand for a figure, so we have a little room to, to work with?
That gives them a little more space this year, if something else goes wrong in the building.
Sure. So do we need, need a motion for that? To, I'd like to make a motion then, to utilize up to, or utilize thirty thousand dollars of the library's surplus dollars? To apply, does that make sense? How that's.
And is your intention to use that for the HVAC project, for capital projects?
Yes.
For that capital project?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So then we could say that that kinda takes the library's, hopefully, down to eighteen thousand, five?
Yeah.
Is that what we're saying? Yep, okay. Or if we take that, okay.
I'm wondering if I could just comment on that a little bit, too. I've discussed this quite a bit with the library board, I mean, this is a project that, if it doesn't get done, our books and everything, you know, we're gonna end up having mole issues, and, so it's something that has to get taken care of, it's room on a set, I mean, there's, this is one estimate, it obviously has to go to, to bid, but, we've discussed this with the board, so, um, I think within the next couple weeks, once we meet again next week, there's a chance the board will be contributing some money toward this project as well.
Okay.
The library board is possibly getting a donation that would, they would like to help take care of this project, so.
Good.
Time is of the urgency, but that number, you know, at this point, until we get some more concrete numbers, and.
It could fluctuate, yeah.
I need to be so wobbly, but I, they, the board, library board understands the need to get this done, and, um, at the expense of like other projects in the city, would like to help.
I, I, I agree, I, I agree with you, it, it does need to be done, because all of that stuff inside your building is just gonna go to waste, if it, if it's not taken care of, so.
But it's a big chunk of money, when you look at street projects, and, you know, they're in the same offer, so.
I know, but it's, yeah, it's important.
We're still good with, though, using the surplus to knock down what we need to get this.
Knowing it's an estimate, but it's based on some analysis that was done, and it's on staffing, and that's, you know, we know where we are for the rest of the year for staffing, so we think it's a pretty safe number, but, you know, it's an estimate.
There's a motion and a second to use the surplus fund to take care of part of the projects for next year at the library. Good way of putting it, or?
Yeah, I mean.
Just to deduct it from our.
Yes.
What we need to, need to get the levy down there. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm gonna make a motion to reduce the, um, the levy here by fifty-two thousand, five hundred, by eliminating one youth plow truck.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Please repeat. Eliminating one plow truck, and cutting that hundred and five in half. Although Tom said you had a couple that are high twenties, some years old. Have we done any, any shopping at all yet for them?
No.
No? But those were some, you had some idea that you could get for all that price?
Yes.
Probably local vendors with pre-owned plow trucks.
Not like these.
No.
I'll second that motion, sorry, I was busy trying to write it.
Alder Davis.
Any further discussion?
Was to reduce by fifty-two?
Fifty-two, five. Either way.
Either way, one half.
Cut in half. Roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yeah.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Eight thousand?
Would the ball field lighting rewire be put under the capital surplus fund? Used out of that?
Well, it's got a ten-year life, probably, Tom?
Yeah.
How long they been there?
Eighty-eight or something?
Ninety-five?
Something like that.
Before that.
Before my time, I was here in ninety-five, so I think it was like late eighties.
I was playing over thirty ball, just barely over thirty, thirty-plus years ago out there.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Do what?
To, uh, remove the thirty-five hundred for the racetrack light, lighting and move it, so we're using surplus funds.
I'll second that, for using surplus funds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fifty-four, five. New figure?
Twenty-one.
Kirsten, did you, are, are we waiting on bids for the paint, or?
Uh, no, but you would ask me to kinda look for some different zones, so I, there are some areas that are worse, so, we could cut that and do part of it. That's what, that's, when Sandy had asked me if I had some numbers, like, we just did this hallway, or just did that.
Well, what I was wondering is if you got, um, if you could get the painter to say, to do this section, it would cost this much. To do this section, it would cost this much. That's what we're looking for.
Right, and so, I don't count that.
Do you think by our next meeting, you might have, or not? Okay, thanks. I think that'll be helpful.
Do we need the refamiliarizer we thought we were shooting for, with those areas?
You're familiar with, okay.
And it's kind of the labor versus the.
Sure.
Yeah, leave the easy stuff.
Yes. Well, by doing the easy stuff, it probably won't save a whole lot of money, but.
Well, it's big stuff, but it's just.
Yeah.
That's why up in the air. So it's, woodwork in the way either.
Where are we at with the copier lease for the police station?
Well, which is, it expired in April, so it's gonna have to be replaced.
Were we gonna look more into whether or not that was a logical purchase?
In your staff report, there's an analysis of the city hall copier.
Sounds like it makes sense to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we have a sample size of one, but it was a good investment for the, for the city hall copier, buying it as opposed to leasing it.
And I would assume that, here at city hall, you're gonna make a lot more copies than the police station, I would assume.
I think that's probably true.
Of course, they could probably sneak over here and use your copier, and then it really wouldn't cost them much.
Probably not the most efficient.
No.
How much would a pneumatic tube system cost?
There you go. And people don't find that funny, but I did. Um, the scheduling software, is that something new, or do you have a scheduling software now?
That's new.
I'm sorry, can you?
Um, the scheduling software, that's something new, you don't have one now?
That would be new.
Okay. And the two new computers, that didn't, so I know you had some computer work done, um, because.
Like every other department, we rotate computers.
Got it, okay.
These two are for the front office area, and we've all, well, that's the limit, they're holding on with all the programs and stuff that gotta keep getting added with the spillment programs and that, they're just, they're holding on, but not by law.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know, new computers came with that or not, that was just server? And are these from, the computers are from, two of them for two thousand, that's really nothing, yeah.
So I have a question here on that copier again, so if we leave the eight thousand in, we can minus the eight sixty-four, is that already reflected in what's, um, printed on our, our budget sheet here?
The reduction in operating costs?
The reduction in the copier lease.
Yes, it's already in the budget.
So it's already been?
Yep.
That's why the minus, is it alright?
Unless we take one or two big ticket items, we're just piddling around with the small peanut ones, I mean, it doesn't, we're not gonna gain much on some of these little things.
So your, your actions for, like, bigger numbers are capital surplus, borrowing more money, or borrowing the same amount of money you plan to borrow next year, and throw a project off the end of the list, which would be Quigley, because that'll be the only thing really left.
So what's in the surplus right now, the way it's standing?
Thirty-eight, and you just took thirty-five hundred out?
Say that again, the number's one thirty-eight?
One thirty-eight.
It's on page one.
About one thirty-five? We're about one thirty-five, because we're taking some out. And we're borrowing, how are we on the borrowing again? I don't think I have my thing with me.
Um, we're, next year we borrow, uh, we always, uh, if you stay with the plan you've had in the past, you borrow about a million dollars, and that's to fund projects for the pool, and Chaucer, which you're already doing, and South Main, which is a wild card for sure, but that's a huge project, and Sweeney, which is your next year's street project, and Quigley, that would be the, the other project in the list. So, some of the stats we had earlier, if they're helpful, um, for every hundred thousand extra you borrow, over a million, you would be adding six dollars and sixty-three cents onto the tax bill for every hundred thousand dollar value house.
I have a question on Sweeney. Is the reconstruction the entire length of Sweeney, both north and south of St. Joseph's Circle, or is it only one stretch?
South.
No.
Just the south part.
Okay. From St. Joseph's south to?
Chamberlain.
And, uh, Chamberlain. What do we normally run in our surplus throughout the course of a year? Well, you know, what's comfortable, are we been sitting there with it?
Um, well, it, it entirely depends on the surplus for what's created, and we created, I'm going on memory, around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in surplus in twenty seventeen, that was transferred in, so we were down to like forty thousand in that account before the transfer you made of the twenty seventeen surplus. So, you know, it, it very much depends upon, uh, what happens in the general fund. If the general fund were to have a deficit this year, which is not what we're predicting, right now it looks as though it'll produce another, another surplus, but if it were to have a deficit, then, you know, you can't continue to operate that way. So, um, the, it fluctuates based on, like, next year's sidewalk projects, those, the funds for those, the piece that are, there's always some pieces of those sidewalk projects that are ours to deal with, ramps and things that, you know, our city property, that's coming out of the capital surplus. But otherwise, it's primarily you allocate what projects you wanna spend funds out of therefore. Last year, as Aldous and McIntyre indicated, we, you know, did part of the work at the vets' building out of that. And the roof at the garage came out of those, will come out of those funds. And that project isn't done yet, so that's still a guess as to what that's gonna cost.
So that hasn't been took out of the one thirty-five yet?
It is out of the one thirty-five. We've accounted for everything that you have said, we just don't have a final number on some of it. The vets' building awnings, I think, are a capital surplus, and that bids will be, as you know, we had zero bids for that, that'll, bids will be open tomorrow for that, so we'll see, and we have a couple bidders, so we'll see what those numbers look like. If you don't get any bidders, it's kind of frightening to think what the numbers might be, but we'll see.
Right. So, I, I'm sorry, I lost track of the last statement, so you're saying that has not yet come out of our surplus?
So one thirty-eight is accounting for everything that you've already said you're taking out. So one thirty-eight is accounting for everything that you've already said you're taking out.
Oh, it is, okay.
Vets Building awnings, but we don't have final numbers.
Right.
The roof at the garage, we don't have final numbers.
But do we estimate?
Little, but not probably too greatly.
But we estimated.
Yep, you had those numbers last year, and those have all been subtracted already.
Okay. So actually, we're sitting pretty good with our surplus.
Yes, and that was, the purpose of that fund was to pay for capital projects you otherwise can't fit in your levy.
Okay.
As opposed to continuing to build your surplus because you have adequate general fund surplus.
Maybe that Ronson might have been a.
We have fifty-four thousand, five twenty-one left. We have a hundred and thirty-five thousand in surplus. So we, if we were to take that in surplus, we'd be at eighty thousand, four seventy-nine, but however, we got to make sure that fifty-four thousand, five twenty-one is accounted for capital projects in order to be able to take it out of that surplus.
Yeah.
With a ten-year lifespan.
Correct, that's your policy, so you would pick those projects that have a ten-year life if you wish to use capital surplus funds for those projects.
And that would be anything over here in the right column?
Um, it would be, the larger numbers are going to be the two big pool items.
Right.
The library work.
Plow truck.
Ronson Drive, Thomas said will have a ten-year life.
Oh, it's capital projects strictly, not capital equipment, okay.
Right, capital projects.
Oh, yeah, yes, equipment and projects.
There can be capital equipment.
Yes, absolutely.
So then a plow truck would be.
A plow truck would fit that, okay.
Get us there.
I assume your used truck will have a ten-year life, Tom?
Hopefully.
Yeah, what happens if it doesn't?
Well, it's your policy, it's no violation of anyone else's, but your own, but the, the objective is to not use those funds for operating and become addicted to that. So the whole idea you set it up as, is these are surplus funds that we're going to use in a way that furthers the projects that you're trying to accomplish, that we don't seem to have funds for anymore because of levy limits.
That's a, that's a good point, that other plow truck could.
Yeah, we still keep the one off and allow them the one and take it out of the surplus.
Allow them the one, take that out of the surplus. It's a thought.
And then it'll get us down to about three thousand.
And at that point, we don't know where we're going to be, so there'll be some things that'll, you know, fluctuate, certainly you can do what you wish, but I just don't want you to think you're done.
Right. And we don't have to do that tonight either necessarily, it's just a kind of a, something to think about if we need to be.
I think so.
The call.
Yeah, I'd like to think about that a little bit, but that's not a bad idea to think, at least think through that.
That's why I brought that other thing up, just for a thought process.
And then maybe we'll have more numbers on the.
Looking at the totals at the way end of the budget, the far end. And the projected and the actual, projecting and the budget are not that far apart this year, so.
Look at the revenues, though.
Oh, okay, they're up, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're going to, you know, again, this is, these are all, we don't know what is all going to go on, but our projections are, revenues are going to be over by.
See, oh, they'll be happy. We must break back up there.
And that's why, what are the biggest? Growth, I mean, are the. I mean, what is the big revenue?
We have. Budget to projected. Licenses and permits are building permits, but those are, you see an offsetting expense, so that really, that doesn't count. We have fines and forfeitures are over budget, our revenues are higher than projected.
Okay.
Public charges for services are over projected. That's spread out over a lot of things, interest is up. And then we had some insurance recoveries and property sales that were.
Okay.
Some of those are offset with expenses, but those are, some of those are real numbers. It's about a hundred thousand net. I'm a little, you know, I wouldn't, I don't count on that, but.
Right.
It's not, it will be a positive, it appears it'll be a positive number, so it's not like we're going to be negative in that hundred and thirty-eight thousand is, you know, suspect, so.
Sure.
And you're going to probably get some more numbers before the next meeting, Ramona, with some?
Highway aids are usually out early October, they're not out today, so that's the, the biggest piece of the revenue, we're, we don't know yet. Otherwise, it'll be the smaller numbers, but there's always something, you know, information that comes in that at this time of year, we're trying to get everything solid, but.
I'd be comfortable even right as we sit right now, then.
Everybody good till the next meeting?
I am good.
No, I am. Well, if everyone's, everyone's okay with thinking about it for a couple of weeks, we will move on to Mayor Alder Person's and staff reports. Now, if current police chief Kubertons can make the next meeting, we'd like to do a little recognition for him, and. He was concerned about not being in uniform, but.
Just being close, please.
Needs one, they could borrow one, but I do have something for his, his last shift, which I would have left at home, but.
What is it?
Does he remember?
I hope he remembers.
He'll tell the story.
It's not empty, it's on ice even. But you could have it after tonight's shift if you wanted, now, so that'll work out all right. Yeah, I know, but not once you, that's what you, not once you see what's in there.
That'd be a slip.
No, there's, that's the good stuff I kept at home. Tom, anybody else have anything? Tom, Tom does have something.
If you remember back, well, I guess only some of you. We had a NWI case, went municipal. Point oh eight, it was dismissed by municipal judge, convinced you all to appeal it, and last week.